I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here. And, Council, thank you for all showing up. And I'd like to, at this moment, give the opening to Counsel Bill Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My topic tonight is called "Retreating Into the Past." I often have people in my office talking about things like, "Back in the good old days, cars were built way better back in the good old days, this was better back in the good old days." So my topic is a little bit about that. Many of us, many among us, might wish to turn back the clock, to retreat to simpler, easy time. We long for the quiet of nature rather than the blast of rock and roll music and car horns. We want to be more directly involved in the elements, whether planting the seed that feeds the family or digging worms to catch our fish. Perhaps we long to raise our own animals to build our own log home. Much debate continues over nostalgia. Is it healthy, or is it escapist? Is it sentimentally an ally or a deceiver? Often, the past seems more idyllic than it was. We forget the horrid problems of yesteryear, and in the process also overlook the blessings of today. Our historical memories are selective. To pine for a misrepresented dreamland is not an authentic thing to do. When simplicity author Art Gish was confronted with the question of turning back the clock, his answer was enlightening. "The analogy of a clock is not helpful. It is not the question of the clock, but a compass. The issue is not chronology, but direction. And that we can decide. We are not retreating, but looking ahead to perceive what is important. Simplification applies leaving things behind and moving into a new future. Perhaps the best solution is a combination approach. Is it possible to accept the best of the past, that the past had to offer, and combine it with the best of the future? In both cases, the principles of direction and selectivity will be our guide. We travel in the direction of our priorities, and we select only that which is consistent with those priorities. From the past, we might select a slower pace, fewer alarms, more physical activity, less time urgency, less complexity, intensity overload, and a more stable sense of community. From the future, we might select the miracles of health care: travel, communication, plus some of the convenience of modernity, like running water and hot showers. Instead of escaping, we are transcending, holding on to that which is good and rejecting that which is destructive. Live one day in 1850." You might be surprised how interesting that slow, slow pace this adventure turned out to be. Use, use only the technology that existed during that era. This, of course, never precludes walking, reading, conversing, or sleeping. By suspending our hurry technologies, it'll quickly become apparent just how large a role the modern devices play in our unreasonable pace of modern life. A proverb is, "Don't throw away the old bucket until you know whether it holds water." Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Hebert. That was very thought-provoking. Counsel, we have the agenda in front of us. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Swaestra. Any comments? I'll call for the question. All those in favor. That is Carrie. We have the minutes of February 18th, 2020, the regular council meeting. They start on page one in your package. Counsel, we've all had an opportunity to review. Just looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Penner. Any, any comments?
No comment.
Okay. Call for the question. All those in favor. That is Carrie. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none. And seeing that it is at 7:35, we will go to six, the public, the public hearing council. We've got two public hearings today. They will, there's a broken up in A and B. That is for the Millbrook Market. So we'll take, we'll take A and B together, and then we'll, we'll close the, the public hearing, and then we will, we'll vote on them separately after that. But we'll, we'll take them both together. So at this point, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Warrentine, could you please introduce both A and B?
Yes, Mayor Funk and members of council, as you mentioned, bylaws 2136 and 2137, 6A and 6B on your agenda will be dealt with concurrently insofar as the public hearing. So I will introduce both files together, and then Mayor Funk, you could proceed as necessary thereafter. Purpose of bylaw 2136, the owner and applicant of secondary bylaw plan 2136 is 10027732 Manitoba Inc., with the applicant of the secondary plan and zoning being Lowen Henderson Bandman Lago LP. This also applies to rezoning bylaw 2137. Purpose of secondary plan bylaw 2136 is the secondary plan is a guide which will outline how the property will be developed, and the secondary plan must be approved by city council should it choose to, in the same manner as a zoning bylaw is approved. Secondly, purpose of the public hearing is to consider the rezoning bylaw 2137, that's to rezone the subject property, which is located at 110 PTH 12 North in Steinbach from DR 1, Development Reserve 1, as shown on the map, to CMX, Commercial Mixed-Use Zone. The applicant is proposing to rezone and develop the property as a mixed commercial and residential use site. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file, other than from correspondence received from Community and Regional Planning Branch, for which they indicate that the secondary plan currently conforms with the intents and policies of the city's official community plan, and requests or suggests that city council may approve second and third reading. There is also correspondence from Community and Regional Planning with respect to the rezoning bylaw application, and the Planning Branch also indicates that there is no concerns with the application. Generally, administration comments are as provided in the agenda. Recommendation from administration is for council to give bylaw 2136 and bylaw 2137 a second and third reading for both bylaws, again, subject to any comments that may be provided at the sub, public hearing, and that bylaw 2137 be subject to the execution of a development agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Warrentine. Okay, we will, we will start with A, bylaw 2136, the secondary plan, and that'll be second and third reading later on. But is the applicant here today? Would you like to take the stand, please?
Thank you.
Please state your name and your address.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is David Bandman. I'm here along with my partners to introduce the Millbrook Market development, so you have an idea of, of what we have planned here and, and the process that's gone into starting the secondary plan as well as the rezoning. Hopefully, this all works. All right. As a developer, a piece of property usually lends itself to a single use. Example, attractive land might be suitable for residential, commercial, or industrial uses based on location, topography, or zoning. Traditionally, that's the way we do it. We, we see a piece of property, we say, "That might be very good for a, for a residential development," and that's what'll happen, and that's what'll happen. I think what's so exciting about this project is because of its unique size and location, we've got about 20 acres along Highway 12 that's adjacent to Superstore. It really allowed us to think outside of those traditional boxes, to try and develop a integrated neighborhood encompassing residential, retail, and office uses all, like a neighborhood, all in one particular area. So the, we're here tonight for council approval on the rezoning to CMX, as, as Mr. Warrentine said, as well as approval for the secondary plan, which will guide the development over the coming years. We've been working closely with the plan, with the city staff, for almost a year, and would like to thank Planning and Engineering for all their help to work with us to create something that's going to be, I think, really, really unique in our community. As an overview, we put together a really short 3D animation that you can kind of see how we envision the, the whole entire development to work once it's been built out. That gives you just a brief look at how we're trying to integrate all those different uses into one area while still making the entire area, neighborhood interconnected and also connecting to the adjacent parcels as well. As for the planning goals, the Millbrook Market secondary plan is focused basically on three areas, and the one, number one is mixed use, to provide a mixed-use area that includes multiple uses within the buildings or within the entire planned area. Compatibility, to ensure that the range of uses are complementary and compatible through the use of well-designed buildings and public spaces. And three, residential diversity, to provide a variety of medium and high-density housing options within the mixed-use environment. We're also looking to create a sense of place, to create a unique identity for the market by providing a development that offers local services as well as distinctive shopping and residential neighborhoods, all combined in one. You can see there, it's, what we talk about a lot of is cohesive live-and-play centers that, that can really complement the community plan. There we go. We've also really done our best to try and design the area for the pedestrian. So as you could see, well, that, that area that had a lake looked a little bit like a beach. That wasn't really our intent, but we do want to have gathering places that, that people can gather and walk to and get along very easily, as well as with water features, landscaping, and green spaces. Transportation is also one of the biggest things that we're focused on here, and that's integrating a variety of transportation modes, so pedestrian, cyclist, private vehicles, also to make it walkable as much as possible, and with our, with our, climate is tough to do, but we're doing our best to try and make that pedestrian connectivity work, and also to connect to adjacent properties. So we have made provision to, to actually be connected to the adjacent Superstore should they wish to connect, so that people can walk and, and take their cars and shop and, and also live in the same area. So for the rest of the presentation, one of our partners, Keith Unger, will take over for the rest.
Do I have to state my name? Or?
Just for the record, because it's all tape.
Sure, yeah, I'm Keith Unger, one of the ownership group for Millbrook Market. And Bill Hebert was talking about the old and the new, and if you look at the Millbrook Market name, we're trying to encompass a bit of the old and the new in the, in there. I think some of our research showed the, the creek that ran through there is, has maybe some historic significance, so, and it, and I believe that creek runs on its way to Mill. So we kind of played with the words, and up came Millbrook Market. You'll, oh, no, sorry, you'll notice later that we are going to probably focus a little more on, hopefully, this area is going to be called "The Market." We'll just see what, what the public, you know, grabs onto and what takes. I'll talk a little more about how the development will lay out from our perspective. The yellow will be your multifamily, which you probably saw from the 3D. The blue is an option or an opportunity for us to do a mixed-use building. I'm not as fond of mixed-use buildings as I am where you see the green is being commercial and the, the yellow being multifamily. To me, 20 acres here are being used in mixed use, but when you're in a residential building, you know you're in a residential building, and when you're in a commercial building, which is next door, you know you're in a commercial building. And I, I think long-term, that's a little better use of mixed use. But we do think the, the blue piece could work well to kind of introduce and mix the two, because the front, the frontage, the high-traffic frontage there on Highway 12, you'll see a lot of franchises, we believe, and, you know, high-traffic retail. The middle piece, you see a building, we're, we're not sure what that'll be at this point. There's a couple of ideas. It could be a big-box retail, it could be, it could be office space. We'd love to keep attracting that middle management type of office job to Steinbach if we can. We think that's a great, great location overlooking a lake. I know we might be able to keep up with some of the offices in California with that kind of image. Here, you kind of see it from the other angle with the multifamily, the mixed-use building, the hub being the, the retail or office. And again, again, this is that, the hub building in the center, which, who knows, if, if we were able to attract a large, big-box store, I think it's also a great location for it. The multifamily is on the farthest western side. You'll see apartment style from what we can tell. You are seeing other styles of multifamily in Steinbach right now that are catching legs. I'm, we haven't, you know, we haven't said no to that idea, but we do think a three, four-story apartment would look good here and would work well. You may see some underground parking. There are not a lot of seniors housing or multifamily housing via amenities. I think, I think it'll be interesting to see what that could be. I, I think that's a great opportunity. And the commercial mixed-use building, again, which would introduce the mix of the, the front half, or front, you know, 60, 70% being commercial, and the rear, and 30 or 40% being a multifamily. This is going to be one of our taglines, initiating positive change to the physical environment and social fabric of our community. And you see the line at the bottom of the market. We'll see, we'll see which name takes, takes hold, but again, live, work, and play, kind of on 20 acres, right on, right in the hub.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll just have you stay by the podium, Counsel. Any questions for the presenters?
A couple of comments.
Yeah, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments. This is exciting. I like the name, creates identity, as you mentioned. I think it is unique, because we don't have anything like this in Steinbach. I don't know if there is something like this in other places in the province, or, and so, but I think this is a unique opportunity in Steinbach. I think this is, could be very exciting and moves forward. How many residential areas or units, any, is that, or is that not predetermined at this point?
It's not predetermined. I think what we're, you're going to see is roughly that 30 to 40% of that land might be multifamily, and then that 60 to 70% would be commercial or retail or office. That's, that's roughly what we're looking at. The drawings show seven multifamily buildings. Again, that isn't set in stone. It'll, it'll, I think that right now, the, the opportunity for the multifamily by, by the amenities, by pools, by golf, groceries, solves a lot of problems for, for a lot of homeowners.
It is exciting.
Yeah. One example, you said, is it being done somewhere else? There's Park City Common, which is Regent In Plessis. If you drive in there, you'll take a look, and you'll see almost the same thing. A little higher density than what we're doing here, but a little different demand, I imagine. And the Distillery District in Winnipeg is also doing the same thing.
Are there any other questions of counsel? Okay. Then I'd like to ask if there's any objections or questions by the gallery for the presenters? I will ask again. Any questions or objections to this file? I'll ask one more time. Are there any questions or objections to this file? Okay, seeing none. We will, we'll move on to number B, bylaw 2137, the rezoning of 110 PTH 12, to, from DR, DR 1 to CMX, and we'll be taking second and third reading later on. Again, I'll ask the applicant if there's any, any further comments to be made. Okay. Counsel, are there any questions of the presenters? Okay, seeing none. I will then ask if there are any questions or objections to, to be the bylaw 2137, the Are there any questions or objections? I will ask a third and final time. Any questions or objections to this file? Okay, seeing none. Then I will close the public meeting and open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed on bylaw 2136? Counsel Swaestra?
I'll make the motion for approval, for second reading.
And Secretary of Counsel, Siemens? Go ahead, Counsel Swaestra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is an exciting, an exciting project, and I'm pleased to see that this being proposed. As we've seen during the presentation, this is a, this will be a significant development. It'll have, there'll be a lot of mixed use. There'll be residential, some higher, higher-density residential. There will be commercial, obviously. It'll be well-connected. There'll be, it'll be pedestrian-friendly, and it is really quite exciting to see the amount of planning that has gone into this, as far as making this an attractive neighborhood, not just for the people who are going to live there, but for, for the city as a whole. And I think this is going to be the type of development that, that we're going to be very proud of. And this is, it just goes to show again that often the most exciting proposals are coming from, from private applicants, from, from the developers. It's, you know, the best projects aren't, governments always come up with ideas, it's the private developers who do it, and we certainly see that here.
Thank you. Anything further, Counsel Siemens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to reiterate, or repeat some of the, the message, but I think it is an exciting project, and I like the name. I think the name creates such a good identity for an area of Steinbach, and I think that, I too think that this will be a great focus area for the community, and it does, it is, is very unique for our community, and I think it would be great.
Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing?
Well, Counsel, I too, I'm actually very excited about this, too. I think it's very innovative, and I agree with Counsel Swaestra. You know, some of the best projects come from developers that take their time and, and really try and do something innovative, and, and we really thank you for looking at Steinbach for this, and, and yeah, I love the name, too, "The Market." I really hope it works out for you, because I know this is what you want, because it, it just sounds so good, "The Market." So call for the question. All those in favor. That is Carrie. Okay, we will go now to bylaw 2130. Oh, sorry, third reading, yes. We'll go directly into third reading. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Hebert. Anything further?
As has already been said, it's exciting, but this is 20 acres, and it's, I won't say it's an eyesore, but when you come into Steinbach from the north, you see this wide-open field, and it's sure nice to see that it's going to be developed, and so I'm excited and thank the private investors that are, and developers that are moving this thing.
Anything further?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to add also that this will put Steinbach on the map. I know there's a lot of talk about Niverville and all kinds of stuff, but this is really going to do it for us, and I'm hoping this hall moves forward. Looking forward to it. So totally behind you there.
Anything further for counsel? Anything in closing? Okay, counsel, call for the question, third reading. All those in favor? And that is Carrie. Okay, now we'll go to B, bylaw 2137, the rezoning of 110 PTH 12. We're going to the first and second reading. Counsel, how would you like to move? Counsel Siemens?
Wish to approve.
Second by Counsel Penner. Go ahead, Counsel Siemens.
Well, this is the next step in the project. We, we approved the initial secondary plan. Now, now we've got to change our bylaws and, and change the zoning on it. So in order to do that, we need to change the zoning here.
Okay. Anything?
Nothing further, no.
Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just heard you say this was first and second reading. Just to be sure, this is for second, third reading?
Second and third. Okay, yeah. I say a lot of things. Where were we? Oh, I was at, anything closing?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll call for the question. All those in favor of second reading? That is Carrie. Okay, we'll go directly into third reading. Motion to approve, Counsel Swaestra, second by Counsel Penner. Any comments? Anything further? Any further of counsel? Anything in closing? Call for the question for third reading. All those in favor? That is Carrie. We will go to 6C, and we'll take six, we'll do the same thing. We'll do 6CDE all together, because they're all included in, in Park Hill. It will include the bylaw 2143, the repeal, the bylaw 2140, changing the phases, both second, third reading, and we will also do the motion for the subdivision. At this point, I will close the council meeting and open the public hearing. And Mr. Warrentine, could you please introduce these three files?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, there are three separate files under consideration that are being heard as a concurrent public hearing. This particular batch of files relates firstly to bylaw 2143, which is the repeal of the existing secondary plan for a property known as Park Hill, which is north of Mackenzie Avenue. It also is to consider the rezoning bylaw 2140, which is to rezone a portion of the subject parcel for the purpose of residential development. The developer is proposing to rezone portions of the land, as noted in the attached sketches in your package, from RSF, Residential Single Family, and RMD, Residential Medium Density, to a mix of RHD, Residential High Density, RLD, Residential Low Density, RMD, Residential Medium Density, and RSF, Residential Single Family. Further, this group of files also contains an application for subdivision file 4451-2019-8250. Purpose of that application is to allow the creation of 28 RSF, Residential Single Family lots, 15 RLD, Residential Low Density lots, 16 RMD, Residential Medium Density lots, and one RHD, Residential High Density lot, and the creation of the extensions of Rosebook Trail, Kootney Way, Jasper Drive, and the creation of Caribou Bay and Pacific Bay. The applicant is developing the next phase of a multi-phase residential development. The owners of the property are Sinceras Park Hill GP LTD, with the applicant for these files being Mr. Jordan Sedomsky. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file, other than correspondence received from Community and Regional Planning with respect to the repeal of bylaw 21, sorry, repeal bylaw 2143, which is to repeal the secondary plan, and for the rezoning, bylaw 2140. Generally, comments from Community and Regional Planning is, if counsel is satisfied that the proposed rezoning bylaw is consistent with the official community plan, community planning will not object. And further, community planning does not have any concerns with bylaw 2143. And finally, with subdivision file, the the comments from community and regional planning are that generally there are no concerns with that file. With respect to administration comments, there is a significant amount of paper within the package. Hopefully, counsel has had a chance to review. But generally, recommendation from administration is that repeal bylaw 2143, rezoning bylaw 2140 and the subdivision application, as noted, be approved with the rezoning and the subdivision be approved subject to execution of the development agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Warrentine. Okay, so we'll go to C, bylaw 2143, the repeal bylaw of 2072. Just asking if the applicant is here today. And would you take the podium and would you like to speak?
My name is Jordan Sedomsky. I represent the applicant, Sinceras Park Hill GP. We're excited to get going on Phase 2. And everything that we've seen within the planner's report and coming from the administration, we're in agreement with and everything else at this point is just looking forward.
Are there any questions of Counsel Swaigstra? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you just give a brief, just a brief explanation for the reasons for the changes that you're looking to make? You don't have to go into lots of detail, but just in general terms, why are you requesting to make these changes?
Yeah, absolutely. From a demand standpoint, coming from our real estate agent, Walden Ustater, his suggestion is that success in this phase and in this area Steinbach is going to be predicated upon getting more attached dwellings in this phase. Originally, everything that you see there that is colored was largely slated to be residential single-family in the same mode that you would see on Glacier Bay and Park Hill Crescent right now and what will ultimately be the case over on Caribou Bay. For us, that was, you know, and ultimately the market, just simply too many single-family dwellings to bring on. It would cause a bit of a fractured phasing where you would end up, you know, a bit further north and have no real connection down. And at the same time, we wouldn't have that lower, you know, the lower market product to offer for, you know, people who are looking for, you know, a home that they can get into that isn't necessarily detached but has a small enough lot that it makes it affordable, you know, and a home that is still something that they can be proud of. And we've got very similar models as it is right now on Park Hill Crescent in that duplex formulation. Same with Kootenay Way as well, where we have the fourplexes and that would be a very similar model that we would carry on down Rosebrook. So more or less it was, give the market what it is that they're after for the moment.
Just not really a question, but more of a comment, but it might be a question for you. So are you looking then to include more levels of income in this development? Like that you'll have all levels of income from upper-level income to, you know, standard blue-collar income? Like you'll have a house for everyone kind of thing?
Correct. I mean, there, you know, there's, it's not, you know, we don't have a product that offers, you know, a subsidy to get in. So this is for, you know, this is for people who are generally, you know, down-market but are still, you know, well-employed and can qualify at the bank for their mortgage and carry everything on their own. So it's an alternative to renting, you know, on an ongoing basis. But at the same time, this is product that exists as it is in this subdivision and it's really just a provision of more of it. So, you know, the bottom end of the market would be exactly what you see right now by and large on Kootenay and Park Hill. Those types of lots are going to be the same thing that we're offering here. There's really no, there's no difference. If anything, these lots are actually a bit wider than what we've provided in the past. And all those lots on Caribou Bay are going to be very similar to that that's on Glacier Bay right now and those are, you know, ultimately larger homes.
Thank you. Any further questions of Counsel Hebert?
Through you, the mayor. The RHD, would that be a rental unit?
There is no established plan for that site right now.
Okay.
Ultimately, it was decided that we just could not conceive of a plan for now. We've tried a number of formulations. And, you know, my guess is at some point, it's probably going to be subdivided up into a smaller block type of offering. It could be really anything. The idea is that if we've got the ability to provide something for, you know, either seniors or people who are just getting started in the form of an apartment condo or something to that effect, we at least have that flexibility. And if the market takes us to continuing to do something that is of a lower density because that's what's in demand, we have that flexibility there too. And of course, we would comply with the engineering to ensure that we could do that without impacting the neighbors.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? Okay. Well, I'll just, I guess you can take your seat for now and we'll ask if there's any objections or questions on this file. Yes? You can, do you have a question or objection?
I have a question with respect to how the traffic is. Or is there any road improvements being considered as part of this?
Oh, you know what? You'll have to come to the mic and then state your name and address.
My name is Gary Harder and I'm here with my wife. We are residents and run a small business on Bush Farm Road, which is just up from the picture, kind of up where you see the word applicant. So my question, my question is with respect to this subdivision and the rezoning, what, if any, plans are in place with respect to road improvements on Bush Farm? McKenzie.
Okay, that is a bit of a distance from this.
It is, but what we're finding is that there's a tremendous amount of traffic coming up Bush Farm, servicing that southwest corner of Steinbach already. We have, I think, all the other arteries like from basically Highway 12, Main Street, Hesper on the other side, or Herschfeld, I guess, and Old Tom. All of those roads are all paved and we have a tremendous amount of traffic on this side of Steinbach as well. And we have a road here that is not up to any kind of decent standard at all. Like there is no, there's no cloth under there, there's no gravel there. We see that road turn to complete goop frequently in the spring, right off of 52. There's a low-lying area there. We've had Southland, the Southland Church property, they've developed, continued to develop to the west. We've probably got, you know, 3,000 to 4,000 people attending services there on a weekend, on any given weekend. I couldn't tell you how many cars come off of there, but there's three access points coming off of Southland. And I think just recently, about a week ago, maybe a little bit more, Steinbach Online article identified through a traffic study how much traffic was coming onto Highway 52. So it's coming from somewhere and I would argue that a lot of it is coming from Bush Farm Road.
Okay, thank you. Is there, that was your major?
That's my major contention, yeah. What is the plan? Is there a plan to improve the road? And if not, then I have an objection to what's going on here without a plan in place to improve the road, including hard surfacing the road. That's what we'd like to see.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Warrentine, to that question, is Bush Farm Road a factor or is the upgrade of Bush Farm Road necessary for this development to go forward? Or maybe you can answer better than, to something like that?
Perhaps I will address that firstly by summarizing the, the city has a number of development policies and places a number of obligations on developers whenever there is proposals to develop vacant land such as this particular area. By and large, when it comes to accommodating traffic, the, it is the responsibility of the developer to develop any, generally any roads that are fronting proposed developments. This particular development in Phase 1 saw its primary and only access coming off of McKenzie Avenue with a proposed phase that is being requested by the developer. In this particular circumstance, the second access will also be located on McKenzie Avenue with no traffic being directed directly onto Bush Farm Road. And as a result, because there is no development that is actually fronting directly onto Bush Farm Road, there would be no requirement for any improvements to that particular roadway.
Okay, so for clarification, then McKenzie would get the upgrades?
That's correct.
Okay. So that answers your question, sir?
It does, but.
I'll have to, if you're going to speak, I'll have to get you to take the podium.
So what I'd like to, what I'd like to understand is at what point in time would the improvements to Bush Farm Road be considered?
Well, according to, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Warrentine, but according to what you've just stated in our, in our official plan, then once a development's accessed to Bush Farm Road, then it would be, Bush Farm Road would be required to be upgraded at that point?
Generally, that's correct. It's development that would prompt improvements to infrastructure. That would include whether it's road surface or other infrastructure. Typically, it's a prompt by a developer that would then at least cause a review to see what kind of improvements would be required for any roadways that are fronting the development.
So the egress from Southland onto Bush Farm, that doesn't count or what?
I'll have to redirect that question to you, sir.
In that case, no. That supplementary access did not require development of that roadway.
And that seems a bit of a bizarre kind of logic where you have that much traffic coming off. Whereas if somebody was to put in a development that had, you know, five, six lots or whatever, they would have to undertake an improvement on the road. So I'm just, I'm wrestling with trying to figure out what's going to be happening on the west side of Steinbach as development continues. You know, like where Lexington Village is just about slammed right up to Bush Farm. And, you know, it kind of, it hit me when a colleague of mine said, oh, when he asked where we lived, and he was actually somebody I work with in Winnipeg, and he said, I said, "Bush Farm Road." He said, "Oh, well, I drive by there all the time on my way to Walmart." And I thought, you know what? There's a tremendous amount of traffic coming from the southwest corner to the shopping center in the north, right? So I don't know whether or not, you know, that, if it's that bylaw that needs to be reviewed with respect to when road improvements are undertaken. But to wait till the whole thing is being developed seems a little bit regressive to me.
Yeah. And in, at this time, we'll have to, we'll have to look at this development according to the bylaws that we have. And if that's what the bylaw states, that it's on, that improvements are required on the frontage road, and that's what we'll have to look at. So as long as, in this case, as long as the adequate improvements are being made to McKenzie, that's what we have to look at at this point. So we can't, I know, we do do a lot of planning and hypothetical and future planning, but at this time, Bush Farm Road is not in the, it's distant. It's disconnected from this development at this time.
Okay.
Okay. And it's not perfect, but that's how it is. Okay, I will ask again. Any questions or comments, or any questions or objections to this file? I'll ask one more time. Any objections or questions to this file?
So can I not put an objection on the table?
Mr. Warrentine, would?
If I understood Mr. Harder correctly, that if there were no improvements that are contemplated for Bush Farm Road, that he was fully intending to object to bylaw 21.
Yeah, then I guess we have an objection on the table then. Okay. And that was, that was the third warning. I'll give one more. Any, any questions or objection to this file? Okay. We'll move on to D. This is bylaw 2140, Park Hill Phase 2. This is DR1 to RLD, RMD, RSF. And there'll be second and third reading on this. The applicant is present. Do you wish to speak? Okay, good.
I'm necessarily in her response to the Bush Farm.
No, I think we took care of that with administration. Good. Counsel, are there any questions on the bylaw 2140? Okay, seeing none. Then I will ask for any objections or questions on bylaw 2140? I'll ask one again. Any objections or questions on bylaw 2140? One more time. Any questions or objections on bylaw 2140? Okay, thank you. And we will move on to E, subdivision, 4451, 2019, 8250. That is re McKenzie Avenue. The applicant is here. Do you wish to speak on the subdivision? Basically, it's just having this because there's road openings and that, that kind of stuff. Okay. Counsel, are there any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Are there any objections or questions for this file? Okay, take the podium and.
So I'd just like to, like my objection with respect to that road improvement, is that, is that objection then put forward with the subdivision?
Mr. Warrentine, can he, he can object to each separate file? Or is one objection on this is enough?
That would be up to Mr. Harder. The city does note your objection to the rezoning bylaw 2140.
So it should be, it should be applied then to subdivision as well? Because it's subdivision that's going to allow for the, or in tandem, be put forward with the zoning bylaw?
You are then, you're posting objection to all three of these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, all for the same reason.
Can, can we let the minutes reflect?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone here with questions or objections to the subdivision? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here with questions or objection to the subdivision? Okay. Seeing no one further, then we will close the public hearing, open the council meeting again. Counsel, we'll go back to C, bylaw 2143, repeal the bylaw 2172. We're looking for, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Penner?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second, or Counsel Penner? Go ahead, Counsel Penner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As with any large development that's going to take place over a number of years, demand and supply changes for what people want in their homes and in their lots. So this basically reflects that, I guess, updates it to reflect what the demand is in the market. So it makes sense we approve it. Having said that, I understand Mr. Harder's concerns and I suspect that's, we're going to start hearing many concerns about that, much like we did with Old Tom Road. So I would just like to mention that I would like to have that on the table for the July study session. It's something we need to have on our radar because as development and as density increases over there, the road usage is only going to increase. So I do think it's something we need to flag and examine in the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to commend the developers on realizing what the demand is in the market and adequately changing their plans rather than forcing a market, adjusting to a market. And that's something that private development does incredibly well. As to Counsel Penner's comments, yes, there is added traffic and there will only continue to be. I think it's further than just Bush Farm Road, though. We're kind of looking at the whole picture there because it is going towards the very north end of the town, skipping everything. So it's Bush Farm, Keating and Park Road West. That's, it's all going to be kind of under that same scope in the future, so.
Anything further of counsel?
I'd just like to make a comment. I think the plan that's been presented here to counsel today is well-thought-out and there's, a lot of planning has gone into it. And it seems to complement the Lexington subdivision to the south. So I think that's good. As far as we're talking about the traffic, yes, there's a number of houses and multi-dwelling residential going in there. But I think in the future, further to Counsel Penner there, is also the school going in there. So I think this is something important that we'll have. we'll have to study in the future.
Counsel Seaman.
A point of clarification. We are talking about repealing the.
Repealing.
That is what, right now. That is what the.
We're gonna be repealing the, the bylaw 2072, and then we are, yeah, and then that is bylaw 2143 we're working on.
Just for clarification, because we're getting comments on.
So, so Mike. Comments on everything, but yeah, we are gonna be talking, we're gonna be voting on repealing.
So my comment, when I talk about this, I see the importance of repealing the former plan.
Okay. Anything further of council? Anything in closing?
Nothing further.
Okay. Counsel, we'll go to second reading in a second, but I do agree, I think, I agree with Counselor Penner and Counselor Penner, that as we grow, we get busier and busier, and our peripheral roads do get a lot of use, and we do need to look at them. And that, that does need to be ongoing, more than just one study session. I think we need to be looking at this and, and in the, in the future, come up with a plan for how we will mitigate these, these, these roads and how we're gonna make sure that these roads will handle the traffic, because we are growing. So that is, I do wanna thank the, the objector for, Mr. Harder, for bringing that to our attention. It's been there, we, we do know it's there, and we do look at these roads from time to time, but, but it's always good to get the reminder. I'll call for the question for the repeal. That's carried. And we'll go right into third reading. Motion to approve, third reading.
Can we do, we have an objection. Are we able to do third reading?
Oh, can we do third, yeah?
Yes. With only one objection registered, there are not sufficient objections to prompt a further municipal board hearing. So council may proceed with third reading.
Okay, motion to approve, third reading. Counsel Ebert, second by Counsel Seaman's.
No further comments.
In closing. So we'll call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. We'll go to bylaw 2140, Park Hill Phase Two. We're looking for motion, how, counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Swakstra?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion for second reading.
Do we have a second, or? Counsel Penner? Go ahead, Counsel Swakstra.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, this is specifically in regard, this portion is in regards to the rezoning, and so again, as the changes as described, from RSF to, and RMD to a mix of RSF, RLD, and RMD, simply changing what is, what is going into a different mix of residential, but still fairly similar to what it was before, but a different rezoning because of the multifamily.
Anything further? Anything further of council? Anything in closing? Counsel, we'll call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. I'll go directly into third reading, looking for a motion to approve, third reading. Counsel Ebert, second by Counsel Ebert. Any comments?
No comment.
No comments.
Any further of council? Call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. We'll go to E, the subdivision 4451, 2019, 8250. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Swakstra?
I'll move for approval of the subdivision.
Looking for a second, or? Counsel Penner? Go ahead, Counsel Swakstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, a public hearing here is required because of the road openings that are mentioned here. And so we've heard the presentation, and I think we should move forward.
Anything further?
Nothing further.
Any further of council? Anything in closing? We'll call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Counsel, we have no delegation tonight. We have, no, 8A, reports and recommendations of city manager. This is the local improvement plan 2020 dash 01, bylaw 2131. This is the Craker Avenue renewal, the third reading. Mr. Warrentine, would you like to introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Bylaw 2131 deals with local improvement plan for proposed project to renew three blocks of Craker Avenue. Also covers local improvement plan 2020 dash 01. The bylaw was given first and second reading by council on December 17th of last year. The Manitoba Municipal Board has now approved bylaw 2131 and local improvement plan 2020 dash 01 under board order E dash 20 dash 019. And that does authorize the city to borrow up to $2.21 million for purposes of this project. Recommendation for council to give this bylaw and local improvement plan third reading.
Okay, counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Penner?
Wish to approve.
Do we have a second, or? Counsel Ebert? Go ahead, Counsel Penner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This is giving us the means to borrow the funds required to reconstruct Craker Avenue. This is an area that has been flagged by administration that we are needing to rebuild, and it is time that we do it.
Thank you.
Nothing further.
Anything further of council? Anything in closing?
Nothing further.
Okay, counsel, I'll just call for the question, all those in favor. That's carried. That's third reading. Okay, we'll go down to B, that 2020 Craker Avenue Restructure Tender Award. Seeing as we've just voted to borrow the money, now we can award the tender. Counsel, how would you, Mr. Warrentine, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, this is a matter for the tender award for the Craker Avenue Reconstruction Program that has been planned for 2020. The tenders were closed on February 6, 2020, with seven bids received. Recommendation by our project engineer, Akom, is to award the tender to Maple Leaf Construction Limited for a total of $1.797,432 million plus applicable GST. Recommendation is to approve.
Thank you. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Swakstra?
I'll move approval of the tender.
And a second, or? Counsel Ebert? Go ahead, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, a tender and for just under $1.8 million to Maple Leaf Construction for the, for the reconstruction of about three blocks of Craker Avenue. This is, it's good to see that the tender comes in below budget, and this is, I think, one of the advantages, again, of tendering early. And then we get, we get multiple offers, and we get the best value for taxpayers. So it's an important project. We're obviously borrowing a significant sum in order to make sure the, this, the underground infrastructure and the surface reconstruction happens. And so we should move ahead with awarding this tender.
Anything further, Counsel Ebert?
Like Counsel Swakstra said, it's a good deal for us. Came in under the original estimate, and I think it's a good deal, all around. Thank you.
Anything further of council? Anything in closing?
No.
Okay, counsel, call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. We have number nine, administration, number nine A. We have a council table in the back. Counsel, we've had, we've all had a chance to review, looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Seaman's, second by Counsel Ebert. Any comments? Call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. We have the financial statements ending December 31, 2019. They're also in the book, back. Looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Ebert, second by Counsel Penner. Go ahead.
No comments.
We'll call for the question, all those in favor. That's carried. Nine C, bylaw 2144, street renaming, third reading. Mr. Warrentine, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, this bylaw is to clear up an error that was discovered with a previous street renaming bylaw for Cottonwood Bend. Bylaw 2144 has been given second, or first and second reading in order to be able to properly register. Recommend council give this bylaw third reading.
Counsel, would you like to proceed? Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Seaman's. Any comments?
It's just basically housekeeping.
Yeah. Would just call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. We got nine D. We got the bylaw 2138, the fire rescue truck debt issue. This is the third reading. It's on page 124 of your agenda packet. Mr. Warrentine, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This borrowing bylaw 2138 was for the purchase of a fire truck that the city completed in 2019. The municipal board has approved the proposed borrowing for that purpose in the amount of $800,000, and recommend council give third reading to this bylaw.
Counsel, would you like to proceed? Counsel Seaman's?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counsel Swakstra. Any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is to pay for the fire truck we already have in our possession. And I see that we have a, a good borrowing rate at 2.78% over the next five year term, so.
Anything further?
No.
Any further of council? Anything in closing? Okay, we'll call for the question, all those in favor. That's carried. Nine E, bylaw 2139, Elmdale Street Restructure Debt Issue. We're looking for third reading there. Counsel, how would you like, oh, Mr. Warrentine, could you please introduce this file?
Similar to bylaw 2138, bylaw 2139 is also a debt issue with respect to 2019 project, which was for Elmdale Street Reconstruction. This debt issue seeks to borrow $700,000 from Royal Bank over a five-year term with a rate of also 2.78%. Recommendation is to give this bylaw third reading.
Counsel, would you like to proceed? Counsel Swakstra, or Seaman's?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counsel Ebert. Go ahead, Counsel Seaman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is to pay for a project that was completed, the last phase of the Elmdale Street project. So that has now been completed. Now we need to pay for it. And this borrowing will do that. And again, the same rate as, at 2.78 as administration set.
Anything further, counsel?
Incor with Counsel Seaman's. It's a good deal.
Any further of council? Anything in closing? Oh, counsel, we'll call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Number 10, council question period. Any questions of council? Ain't none. Number 11, council, correspondence and petitions. We've got 11A, Manitoba Infrastructure, 2020 Flood Preparedness Seminars. It's on page 134. Counsel, would you like to proceed? Take it as information. Okay. And we've got 11B, the J. Cap Library, re-minutes of February 2020. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Also take as information. Okay. No other business. Counsel, just before we, we go to adjournment, I guess I'll just apologize. I think I'm still on holiday mode somehow. It was not my best game today at the meeting. Anyways, ask for motion to approve, motion to adjourn. No, you. Counsel Penner, second by Counsel Seaman's. Call for the question, all those in favor. Thank you. That is carried. Next council meeting, Tuesday, March 17, 2020, 7:30.